All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. Does anybody have any additions or deletions for our agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, we'll move to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented.
So move.
So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on into our financial report with Mr. Ray. New father, Mr. Ray. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Glasses are hiding bags.
Yeah, they're saying perpetual tiredness. You should have before you the May financial statements for General Purpose Fund, Federal Projects, Cafeteria. In my world, nothing exciting to report is actually a good thing for the General Purpose Fund. Federal Projects is a break-even fund. We get the grant money and we expend the grant money according to the grant provisions. Cafeteria Fund, we are looking at a possible surplus to end the year, which is, I guess, will be the first time since I've been around where we've actually, we'll end the year in a positive area. I don't want to commit too fully to that until I dot the i's and cross the t's at the June 30th end, but I'm fairly comfortable to say we'll have a surplus in the Cafeteria Fund, so it'd be my re-
I'll speak a little bit to that with the Cafeteria surplus that we're having right now. That actually is the intent because we have to purchase a new steamer at Clinton Elementary School. So with the surplus, we'll be able to purchase the equipment without having to dip into instructional funds.
Correct.
And so there'll be a purpose for some of that leftover, but I think we are both pleasantly surprised at how the Cafeteria has worked out this year.
I think last year, we ended the year with a $75,000 transfer from General Purpose into Cafeteria to help fund the Cafeteria, and we still lost $12,000. So you're looking at an $87,000 loss last year, and we've made up 87,000 and possibly went to the other side and had a small surplus. So we definitely are on the right track, for sure, with the Cafeteria Fund financially. Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
I think that's great news, Scott. As long as I've been on the board, we've never seen a surplus in our Cafeteria Fund. So my hat goes off to you and Airmark and the management and the running of the program. It's nice to see that it is an asset to our schools.
It'd be my recommendation that you approve the financial statements.
All right, we have a recommendation before us. I'll entertain a motion to approve financial report as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussions for Mr. Ray regarding our financial report for May? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Quiner.
Yes.
Tim Bobble.
Yes.
Merle Price.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have a budget amendment number four.
Everybody should have a memo from me with the General Purpose School Fund. Our net of the increases and decreases in appropriations is a little over $11,000. We did budget a surplus, an increase in fund balance of 86,000, and that is due to some increases in revenues, a sales tax, mixed drink tax, a slight increase in our pre-K grant, and some donations that were above what I anticipated. I do not want this to paint the picture that our total surplus to end the year will be $86,000. That $86,000 is just accounting for the increases in those taxes and donations that I listed. I do anticipate us having a significantly larger surplus when we finish the year. So that's a positive.
And take note there, the mixed drink tax we did receive this week, the $72,000 from the city of the Liquor by the Drink that has been tied up in court for several years. Anderson County Schools officially dropped that lawsuit against the city at their past board meeting, and so Gail and Roger were able to release those funds to us.
I think that was a little over $72,000, so that makes up the lion's share of that 86,000. In federal projects, I did recommend a budget amendment that is just reclassifying appropriations. You may have a memo if you printed it off before today. I did not have that on there. That federal projects budget amendment was completed this afternoon, so there's no increase in overall expenditures. It's just matching our needs for the federal project with what we're allowed to spend in the grant, making sure everything lines up. And there's no recommended budget amendment for Cafeteria Fund.
Any further questions for Mr. Ray regarding budget amendment number four? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number four as presented.
So move.
Motion in a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Quiner.
Yes.
Tim Bobble.
Yes.
Merle Price.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have restricted and designated fund balance, which is Appendix F.
Everybody should have a memo. All we're doing this year is we are showing that we are restricting the remainder of the Darlene Miller Literacy Fund. We collected donations in her name and memory, so far, a total of $2,570. We have not been able to spend all that as of today, and we don't anticipate, due to some backordering of some things, that we'll be able to spend it by June 30th. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody who donated money, we were very transparent in saying that we are setting this money aside to complete the purchases needed for that fund. There's no designations from fund balance at this time. In the past, we've designated for certain items. At this time, we don't have any special need to designate for outside of what we do in the ordinary course of business, and that won't prohibit us at a future date from doing what we need to do as a school system. So it'd be my recommendation that you accept this restricted amount of 507.79.
All right. We have a recommendation from Mr. Ray to approve our restricted and designated fund balance. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion in a second. Any further questions or comments? Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Quiner.
Yes.
Tim Bobble.
Yes.
Merle Price.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have an extension of our financial obligations. Every year, we have bills that come in past the designated end of our school work year, and those bills need to be handled and taken care of in the following school year. And so what we do every year is we vote to give Kelly that ability to use those funds kind of retroactively that it has already been designated for, but it does take board action in order for us to do that. It is an item that we do every single year in order to meet our financial obligations, and I'll entertain a motion to approve our-
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, we have our school board meeting schedule, very similar to what we have seen in the past. Does anybody have any recommended changes or anything to our presented school board schedule?
Will somebody already be at TSB on the November 14th date?
I have that on my calendar already for some reason, but I know most of us don't always go early.
It'll be you two going up that Thursday after this morning.
We probably need to change that date. That's a little later than they normally, it's a week later, I believe, or is it usually? It is?
Is it a week later or are there?
It's probably-
I see it's later.
Yeah, I think it's a week later. It's usually the very first of November if I remember correctly.
Do we want to, since there's no meeting in December, do you want to push it back a week or push it forward a week? That would put us five weeks in between October and November, but since we're not meeting in December, would that work for everybody? Or do you want to go a week before?
We could do that. I don't know if anybody has any early travel plans for Thanksgiving or the holidays if we do it later. You want to do it the week earlier?
Yeah, let's do it the week. Is everybody available that way?
So what do we vote?
All right, so.
Let's see. That.
The seven?
The seven.
November 7th.
Will we get a reminder?
Yes. You will.
Somebody remind us.
All right, I'm in the clear.
So we'll change that to November the 7th, and we'll get everybody a corrected copy.
Yep, and I'm in there. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to change the-
So move.
All right.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the school board meeting as amended.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. That motion carries. Moving on, we've got our 2019-2020 annual agenda.
So this is a new item up for this year. I think we have previously done this in the past and had gotten away from it, but there is a current school board policy that TSB we've adopted that does state that the board will adopt an annual agenda. And so we modeled it based on one that we had done several years ago. Basically, it just takes kind of standing things that the board does throughout the year and puts it on a calendar, and by board policy, that just has to be approved by the board each year.
And it'll be a reminder for us as well as to what needs to be done and what timeframe, when it's coming down the pipeline as well. All right, I'll entertain a motion then to approve our annual agenda.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, every year, we do contract with the Health Department for dental screenings and also the Lions Club for Vision. We've done that for many, many years. I think it's been a very successful program in helping our children with areas of health. I think it would be a great thing to continue on with that program.
So move.
Motion in a second. Any further questions or comments?
It's usually crowded.
They're on there. They've had their caffeine today.
We're just waiting for Ms. Jordan to give a report.
All right.
Tell Ms. Jordan to come up, give a report, and we're just dying to get her.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on, we have the IDEA and the ESEA application.
This is just an annual application that we have to apply for. Lori and Lori Collins has worked endless hours, but it's our Title I, Title II, Title III, and our IDEA special ed funding, and Title IV as well. So it's just recognizing that we'll accept those funds and use them according to the way our application is written.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consolidated application as presented.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. All right, moving on to our director's evaluation. Did all of you get a copy from Molly?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect, except for Kelly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Must've been bad news.
Don't do it, Charlie.
Don't start sweating.
I did give my copy to Kelly to let her know. Essentially, what it amounts to is, as you all have read, everyone on this board is highly impressed with your productivity, your relationship with the community, your commitment to the schools and this board, and essentially unanimously on this board, we feel that you are doing a great and excellent job at what you are doing. With some of the comments that are there written by different board members, you're more than welcome to read, but essentially, it boils down into a nutshell that you're doing extremely, extremely well, and we are highly, highly pleased, and we appreciate your hard work and dedication, not just to the school systems, but to our children and our staff and this board as well. And so with this evaluation, there were no negative remarks. There were no mediocre remarks. Everything was high-flying, doing a super job, and, you know, I know I speak on behalf of the board because this paper says so. We really do appreciate you. We love the job that you're doing, and we want you to continue down the exact same path that you're going for as long as you would like.
Well, the comments were very, very kind, and I appreciate that, but I consider the comments are not a reflection on me as much as they are the people that I have surrounded myself with. We have such a wonderful admin team, central office team, down to teachers, down to our custodial staff. It's just a remarkable group of people who show up every day, and I feel blessed and honored, and I appreciate all the kind words. I've always said Clinton is where my heart is. Clinton is my home, and it's a destination, not a journey for me. So I will be happy to be here as long as you will have me.
Tim, are we gonna extend our contract at this time?
We can do that. We might need to probably do it in two separate votes then. One, to approve the evaluation.
I'll make a motion to approve the evaluation. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. I would also like to send a warm thank you to Molly Scarborough, who has compiled the data, made the phone calls, and helped out with this evaluation for a few years now, and we really do appreciate it. Her heart has always been with Clinton City Schools, and she used to serve as chairman of this school board as well, so she is still helping us and supporting us on a constant basis. So my heartfelt thank yous go to Molly Scarborough as well for helping us with this evaluation. Second part of this is Kelly's contract. So by law, we can only give Kelly a four-year contract at a time. Coming up in July is when her current year expires, and she will be down to a three-year contract. However, we do have the option of, in July, extending her contract for one more year. I do think that if we could do it for more than that, we definitely would, but state law kind of prohibits us from doing that. So I would highly recommend that we extend Kelly's contract for a further year starting in July.
I'll make a motion to extend our contract for a year, and it's an honor for me to be able to do that, to make that motion.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second from that end of the table, so this is important. Just following your lead.
You've been looking at each other.
Hashtag bookends.
Does anybody have any further questions or comments or anything for Kelly? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second on this table. We'll go ahead and, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Kelly, welcome for another year.
Thank you so much. You know, I'm crying easy these days. I haven't made it through a day without crying yet. I'm almost there, but I might break down in tears. But, no, you all, I wouldn't do it for anybody else. I mean, the school board and the city and the relationships that we have, it's just, it is a very, very special thing that until you get here and you live it, you just don't, you don't know how wonderful it is. But I am thankful every day, not every director is as blessed as I am, to have a school board that just truly shows up to make decisions in the best interest of kids and also pushes us to make sure that we're making decisions in the best interest of kids. And so from the bottom of my heart, thank you for believing in me and trusting me to take care of the kids. It's just a great place to be.
We're glad you're here.
And I'm not crying, so I'm gonna stop talking.
Does that mean we get to skip the director's report?
Well, no about that. I've got some good stuff to share.
All right. Moving on, we'll move on to reports from supervisors.
And so today, the only supervisor report is we're gonna get Dr. J up here today. Ms. Jamie Jordan has gone to come, and she has got some wonderful, this data, you know that we love our data in Clinton City Schools, nothing gets us more excited. But we were doing a few little leg kicks as we held our administrative data meeting. It's a shame that David Quiner didn't come by. We would've made him, we would've made him jump up and down with us, but she has some very good iReady data that's into the year. As she shares this data, just keep in mind, what we will get back from T and Ready is the grades three through six. What we are sharing is grades K through six. So you can't necessarily equate these numbers to exactly what we're gonna see on T and Ready, but what you are gonna see is it shows some very, very promising practices with our foundational learning in our early grades, and it's also showing some promising practices with our Vision 2020 goal of reducing variability between schools. So with that said, JJ, they're excited about hearing what you have to say.
Very good. Thank you. I will make it as brief as possible, but it is informative, so I do want to share it with you. Mr. Andy's gonna get it on the big screen. But before we start, there's three things that I want to share with you tonight specifically, and I want you to look for these three key points as we are going through the slides. One of those is that we truly focus realistically on growth for all students, regardless of whether they're a high achiever, mid achiever, or a struggling learner. So I want you to look at that point as we go through the data. The second point I want to make is I want you to look at differentiation, and I will have a slide to show you how each group of learners, each group is growing exponentially. And the third thing that I want you to focus on is the reduction of our high-risk learners. When I'm talking about a high-risk learner, that would be a student that is two years or more behind, and so I really want you to focus in on those three things. The reduction of high-risk learners, differentiation, and how we realistically focus on growth. Because over time, if you focus on growth, you are gonna break into the achievement gap, and that's the whole purpose of what we do every day. All right, and your page numbers will not align in sequential order because I've taken some slides out, but I want to start on Slide 3. And for the next three slides, we're only gonna talk about math. So it'll have a 3 on the bottom, and that's the slide that I have projected. I had a meeting with iReady, our rep, and had some really good conversations about our district. And one of the things in the conversation was about half the state uses iReady, and he said, according to state results, that we are the top of any that he has seen in math. Now, I don't know what districts use it, but I do know he said we're the best that he's seen. So taking a look at the slide of your page, if you look on the far left-hand side, the green bar is the percent of students that are considered on track or mastered at this point. So about 60% of our students are on track in math, and that's one of our AMO goals for T and Ready. The yellow bar shows that 36% of the kids are about a year behind, but of that 36%, 20% of them are early on grade level. So these are really good numbers. What I want you to compare the difference in is if you look at the left-hand bar and then look at the bar beside of it, the one on the right is fall and the one on the left is spring. Look at the difference in the red bar. 13% of the students were two years behind when they came in this school year, and now we only have 4%. So that is the reduction of that high-risk learner. The other thing I wanted to point out on this slide, if you'll take a look at the bar graph at the top, that has an NO to the left, that stands for numbers and operations, and that's one of those domain areas that statewide students struggle with. The F stands for fall and the S stands for spring, and what the representative was so excited about was in the spring, our students were 65% on grade level. That is fantastic. He said he hadn't seen anything like it. But what I do want you to keep in mind is this is K12 as well as the test of grades. So all of that goes in together. All right, so the next slide for you is on Page 4. And what this slide is gonna do, and again, we're still talking about math, we're gonna look at each grade level and see how they started in the fall and then where they ended in the spring. So if you'll take a look, on the far left is kindergarten, and you can see that they started at 10% on grade level and they ended at 78. So tremendous growth of those students. First grade, basically, what, 1%, 2% on grade level, ended at 68%. So you can go across and look, in second grade, 10% to 50%. In third grade, 9% to 64% on grade level. In fourth grade, 9% to 60% on grade level. Fifth grade, 20% to 58% on grade level. And then in sixth grade, 10% to 43% on grade level. Now, that's where my eye automatically goes because it's so low for us. But one of the things I want to point out to you, if you will take a look at sixth grade, when they came in, 21% of those kids were two grade levels or more behind. 11 of those were transient students that were not Clinton City kids. They came to us as fifth graders, and they were very, very behind. Now, there are 12% of the students that are two years behind. So that's what we have to focus on. They were so far behind, and we are growing those kids. The numbers at the bottom in blue, I had put those in there to show what the green bar was last year at that grade level. And what that helps us see is the instructional strategies, are things working at that grade level? So you could see a big check kindergarten was an improvement, and first grade was an improvement, second grade a small decrease, third grade was a big improvement from last year, fourth grade, a little bit of a decrease but still good numbers, fifth grade a great improvement, and sixth grade a decrease. But I want you to keep in mind that that group struggles, but I do think we're gonna see great T-Voss growth with those students. I think we'll see very strong.
If you also recall, when we look at our school improvement plan for this year, our biggest concerns was in third and fifth last year, and so to look at how we have grown from 46 to 64 and then from 39 to 58, shows that we tackled those areas. And sixth grade came as no surprise. The cohort is just overall very different, and there's some unique needs with some of the students in that grade level, so we're hanging our hat on growth with this one because you'll be amazed once you see that component.
And we prep the teachers for that. The sixth grade teachers were so thrilled with their achievement performance last year, we knew that it was coming, and so we have prepped them with grow them, and that's our expectation. All right, the next slide is, again, we're still talking about math, and this is the percent of growth by students from fall to spring on the test. 100 is the national median. 100% is a national median, but 100% is a year's growth. So when you take a look, you can see that all of our grade levels, all the way across, are substantially above 100%. Just to go back to sixth grade, they had 186% growth, which is almost two years' growth. So academically, they may struggle, but they have learned tremendously this year.
And I believe iReady said that they do not see that kind of growth in sixth grade across the state. They were very surprised at that growth.
Very surprised. The numbers at the bottom, that was the percent growth in that grade level last year, and so to me, that supports that the instructional strategies and the resources that we're putting at those grade levels are really working. All grade levels improved in their growth percentage, except for fourth and sixth, but they were still 152%. They grew a year and a half. So that was in fourth grade, and in sixth grade, 186%. Those babies grew almost two years.
We will take it any day.
Any day.
Take that any day.
All right, so let's go ahead and go to the next slide. This is one of my favorite slides because it tells you so much about what's going on in the district in just a quick look, and it's a quadrant activity where they take the information, they break it up into four quadrants, okay? And the way they break it up, quadrant one is high-performance, high-growth. So that means you have high-achieving students, but that also means they grew tremendously, and they did it by grade level. So there's a couple of things I want to point out. If you look at the very middle of that, the very middle of the graph, that would be 100% growth. And then if you look at it vertically, that would be at the 50th percentile of achievement. So it's really a perpendicular cross between 100% growth and 50% So it's really a perpendicular cross between 100% growth and 50% achievement. So anything to the right of that in quadrant one is fantastic. So when your eye goes to that, you can see all of our grade levels in mathematics are in quadrant one. I do want to point out a few things. The fantastic achievement all the way across the board. And then when you look at sixth grade in particularly, if you take a look at that, they have such high growth. Their performance is not as high, but their growth is tremendous. So I wanted to point that out to you. Let's go ahead and move on to Page 7. This was a new slide they shared with me this year, and I'm really glad that they did because it lets us know if our teachers are differentiating and meeting the needs of all of our students. So if you'll take a look, fourth grade with the purple box around it, this is a true picture of math differentiation. And what that means is the high kids, the medium kids, the lower kids, they're all growing. They said that they had never seen anything this good. So if you, if you look at the mid-on-grade level, 134% growth. There were 12 kids in that group in fourth grade. Then you go down to the next group of students, students that are early on grade level, they grew 143%, almost a year and a half. There were 33 of them. Then you move down to students that are one grade level below. They grew 148% a year and a half. There were 62 of those students. Then you move down to students that are two grade levels below. So struggling learners, they grew 174%. And then finally, students that were more than three grade levels below grew 198% and there were 10 of them. So they grew two years. So kudos to our fourth grade math teachers across the district. This is stellar.
This is closing gaps.
Closing gaps.
But then we also talk about how you've got a group of kids that could walk in and be proficient on the first day of school, but that shows we're pushing them too. We're taking them where they are and we're pushing them, so.
This is just, this is thrilling. When you look at it overall, when you see numbers that are 100 or a little bit below 100, and there's only a few of them, that's an area we need to work on because we want to push that type of learner. However, it is fantastic data. All right, let's go ahead and flip on over to the very last slide, which is, it's a good one. Joey, you're going to like this. All right. So the very last slide in mathematics looks at it by school. So when you're looking from a leadership standpoint and how we work with schools and we work with principals and coaches, this shows you that all three schools are high-performance, high-growth schools. That's phenomenal. Also, what you will notice is the unbelievable growth at North Clinton. Their growth is close to 180%. So think about North Clinton, think about the demographics and poverty there. And when you think of student outcomes of growing them almost two years over time, that's going to cut into the achievement gap. And you will see that when you take a look at the bottom. Take a look at your horizontal axis on the very bottom that goes over by 10s. What you'll see is that all three schools, North Clinton, South Clinton, and Clinton Elementary are within seven percentiles of one another in achievement. A North Clinton student is performing on average within seven percentiles of a Clinton Elementary student.
That's worth a leg kick.
I would, yeah. That is definitely worth a leg kick.
That's good stuff.
That shows differentiation. That shows cutting into the achievement gap. All right. So let's move on to ELA. And I want you to turn to Page 10. It'll have a 10 at the bottom. So we're going to look at the same type of slides, but this is for ELA. Just to preface it, ELA numbers are lower. They're lower statewide. When I spoke to the iReady representative, he said typically, we outperform everybody by 15% in math, typically. And in ELA, we outperform the other half of the state that uses iReady by 5% to 7%. And that's what he saw this year as well. However, we're going to focus on the positive of they are 53% on grade level, which is very consistent with our AMOs. And that was in the spring. But the difference, the decrease in the struggling learner from 16% to 6% is amazing. And that's something they kept repeating over and over to me was, you really differentiate here and you pay attention to your student groups. The last thing I want to point out to you on this slide, at the very bottom, you will see literature and informational text, LIT and IENFO, two sets of bar graphs. What I want to show you is that the performance of students was 54% in the spring for literature and 53% in informational text, almost identical. And they said you never see that. And truly, that is because it's intentional. Lori and the coaches and their principals worked really hard with the teachers about balancing the amount of literature and informational text students read. You know, years ago, when I was in school, you read literature all the time. And they have done a great job of integrating informational text and literature. So that's something I want to applaud them for. They've done a wonderful job. All right, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, again, this takes, takes a look at the grade level, each grade level across the school year, fall and spring. Lots of things to really focus on and be thrilled about. Kindergarten, first, second's almost the same, third, fourth, just a small reduction, fifth and sixth grade, or no, sixth grade was a decline, all were in a better place than they were last year in terms of the percent of students that are on grade level. But intentionally, we focused on third and the fifth grade, and we saw a tremendous improvement in reading in third and fifth grade based off our data. And that's where we put a lot of resources, a lot of time, and a lot of planning. So I'm thrilled with that. Sixth grade again, and I think all of us tend to automatically go to the negative. And I looked at the numbers and I was like, because I know there's an AMO for sixth grade. But when I saw that 45% of the students were two years behind and now only 24% are, I was thrilled because our teachers are doing what we asked them to do. All right, let's go ahead and flip to the next slide. Okay, the next slide talks about, again, the typical growth, 100% national median growth. So the teachers ask, what do you expect? We used to say 100%. And now we've sort of said to them, we'd really like to see you at anywhere from 111 to 120 because if they do that over time, they're going to cut into the achievement gaps. So we've really raised the bar. But taking a look at that, all grade levels amazingly were well beyond 100%. If you'll take a look at, it's beautiful the way it's set up, and Ms. Johnson has done this intentionally over time, but look at third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, it aligns beautifully for T-Voss because each growth is stronger than the other. So it's teacher placement and putting the right people in the right seat on the bus. It's set up beautifully for that. But again, all grade levels had great growth. If you look at the bottom in the blue, that was their growth last year. So again, we talked about third and fifth being very intentional for ELA planning. Those were areas we wanted to target, and we saw amazing growth. So this is really good stuff.
The neat thing about fourth grade is that we had three brand-new ELA teachers across the system in fourth grade. So for us to be able to maintain equal level of growth with three new teachers is just phenomenal.
Phenomenal, yes. All right, let's go ahead and turn to the next slide. This again looks at the grade levels. All of our grade levels are in quadrant one, which is, can't get better than quadrant one. That's fantastic. You can see where sixth grade sort of fits at the 50th median national percentile, which honestly, that makes me happy because I knew where they came in. Look at the high performance though of, like, third, fourth, and fifth ELA district-wide. That's strong academic performance and strong growth by everyone. So we always hone in on the numbers, and if you see a pattern over time, that's where we focus and put resources and instructional strategies specific to that grade level. The very next slide talks about differentiation again, which is key. And fourth grade was cited again in ELA for having fantastic differentiation from 196% to a high learner. A high learner in fourth grade grew almost two years. That's crazy amazing. All the way down to a student in fourth grade that's three grade levels behind, grew a year and four months. So everyone's growing. But it's more difficult to push a higher learner.
And so check out sixth grade. I mean, sixth grade, you know, we did have some high flyers in sixth grade, even though overall, it was a lower achieving class, we did have some high flyers. But that shows that they differentiated their instruction, and we grew that high group three, three, three grade levels.
Three, the high students. They said that never happens. So that shows the teachers are planning for, okay, these are my higher learners, I have to push them. They're not being stagnant in the learning process. All right, let's go to the very last slide. So the last slide shows you when we look leadership-wise, principals, coaches, administrative team, looking at the three schools. North Clinton had the highest growth. That's typical because they have further to go. Or Clinton and South Clinton had very similar growth, but it's fantastic. But what is so interesting to me is that all three schools academically are within five percentiles of each other. That's something I never dreamed would happen. Being with Clinton City 20 years, I didn't think I'd ever see that. And I think that's been intentional, making sure everybody's on the right seat, making sure people are using the same strategies, same materials, getting the same pacing. And it's all been intentional. Okay, any questions? I know that's a lot.
I think those are phenomenal numbers, Jamie. They really speak highly of all three schools and what a great job everyone is doing. I just want to point out what a, what a great packet and how easy it is to follow with the different colors that are on the packet there. I can see exactly what you're talking about.
So you're okay with color copy, is what I'm hearing.
This data is worth a color copy.
It is definitely worth a color copy.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you. And I hope you enjoyed it, and I'm sorry it was long, but really, you have to get all of it to get a good understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know your hearts are over bubbling right now, aren't they? I can tell. Even though you're not physically showing it, I know that you're just so excited inside of that data. Did you get excited about that?
I'm excited about the data, but I'd like to ask the question. I might not should ask this question. Before you've got sixth grade kids that are performing at that level and they're going to the county schools, how are the county schools actually holding up some of those kids, letting some of those kids be held back to repeat the sixth grade?
I think a lot of it may deal with sports.
I understand that. That's a nice question.
I don't know. We, we, we give a recommendation for promotion or retention, and then it's up to the receiving school if they want to honor that recommendation or if they want to go a different direction.
I caught you last night about one. I heard Nate mention, I was watching the sixth grade graduation, and she received a presidential, whatever that award is.
Academic fitness.
For four, five, and six, A's and Bs, and going to be retained back to the sixth grade. It blows my mind away. I don't understand.
Peer involvement.
True.
Anyway, good stuff, Ms. Jamie. Very, very proud of that data.
They did good stuff.
All right. Moving on, please make note, Ms. Abby Swanner was our Ruth Foster Wright Scholarship winner this year. If I may brag about Ms. Abby, wasn't she the valedictorian at Clinton High School this year? If I remember right, she's a Clinton alumni.
Well, she, she, yeah, she is, she's a Clinton City alumni.
And the valedictorian at Clinton High School.
Great girl.
So congratulations and a job well done to Ms. Abby Swanner. And her mother is also a teacher with us as well. So great things. Still coming from a good, solid base at Clinton City Schools. No board meeting next July. Summer Law Institute, I think everybody has let Ms. Kim kind of know who's coming and who will be present. TSBA Fall District Meeting will be in Maryville. Do you know, Kim, what time we will be leaving to go to the Fall District?
We usually meet at Central Office and take the van.
Yeah. Do you know what time that is?
At Maryville, we could probably leave about 3:30 and be fine.
Okay.
I think their intention is to hold that at Maryville High School, so I think giving an hour travel time is more than plenty.
All right. So everybody, please look at your schedules. Coming up September the 17th, if you are available, please let Kim know, and we will plan to leave and meet at Central Office at 3:30. That concludes everything and reports for information. We'll move on into our director's report.
Just a few quick updates. I'll make this fast since we spent some time looking at data today. Just wanted to let you know that the busy summer that we're having, the past three weeks have been filled with specialized camps that, that students have been able to attend. The first week of summer, we held a STEAM camp at North Clinton Elementary School. We had about approximately 50 students attend that. That was led by Vicky Babbel and Jill Smithson in conjunction with ORAU. And the kids had an absolutely phenomenal time. I have never seen so much trash in one room in my whole entire life, and they took it and made some of the neatest inventions and worked on engineering and, and creation. And it was just a wonderful week. I think all of the adults were about dead by the end of the week because it was so fast-paced, but the kids had a great time. Then last week, we took close to 70 students to JA Biz Town where they did a week-long camp there where they learned soft skills and reviewed for jobs. They created communities, they worked, they managed bank accounts, they got upset that they weren't making enough wages and their money went away too fast. And it was just, it was, it was a great week. We provided transportation from North Clinton, and by the end of the week, we were transporting seven, seven, eight kids. And so we were glad to see good representation from all three schools. And then this week, our own Allison Swanner is hosting the Exceptional Artist Camp, which Joey actually and his wife were a volunteer for that on Monday, and it is going extremely well. The kids are just having a great time upstairs, and they'll, they'll do their culmination activity in the auditorium tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock. So we've been able to offer these to keep kids engaged throughout the summer, and it has proven to be very successful. We're continuing the summer lunch program at North Clinton Elementary School. From 11 o'clock to 12:30, we're serving a hot lunch for free for any kid. They do not have to be a Clinton City student in order to attend. They can live inside the city limits, outside the city limits, because that's a federally-funded program that's open and available to everyone. And once again, the Clinton Library is doing their mobile library cart every Friday. And so students who come to eat on Friday can also look at books, read books, check out books, and have a good time with the Clinton Library. Some of the facility things that we're doing this summer, Scott and I have not tackled a huge capital project this summer, but we are doing some very important small projects that desperately needed to be done in all three schools. So we are ripping out the carpet in North Clinton front office there that's very, very worn. And so we're putting tile down in the office there and also in the hallway where the computer lab and the intervention room and the lockers are located at North Clinton Elementary School. We're painting some hallways in Clinton and the rails outside that desperately need some attention at Clinton Elementary School. With our ring-in system, we were made aware by the fire marshal that we needed to do a little something different with those ring-in doors. We will still have a ring-in system, but we're just having to do some adjustments on the doors to get them in compliance with the fire marshal. So we're doing that this summer. We're finishing all the countertops. There's four or five more classrooms that are in the upstairs of Clinton Elementary that need to be done, so we're doing that. And then we're placing some updated LED lighting in the hallway at South Clinton. And based on several instances that have happened in this past school year, we're going to be installing a buzz-in system for Central Office, much like what we have at the three elementary schools. So we're working on that. Central Technologies is in the process of ordering all the components of our crisis alert system. So they have promised me, knock on wood, that they'll be able to have that up and running by the time teachers and students return. And then if you get a chance to watch city council meeting from the month of May, we had a group of sixth graders, and I think I told you about this last time, but they actually did come up with a solution to the algae problem at Town Springs, the pond that's located behind the Clinton Community Center. And so Roger and JB actually jumped on that very quickly and went and bought the plants that they had recommended and have actually planted those plants. And Ms. Odell went out, I was telling a few of you all. And Ms. Odell went out, I was telling a few of you all earlier this week and talked to JB, and they've kind of tweaked because they've got to get the right number of plants to decrease the algae. But the students discovered that the nitrogen levels were way too high in the water and that was causing the algae to form. The plants are going to help lower the nitrogen, which is going to help kill the algae. And so, the kids came and actually presented that to city council and they just did, they did a phenomenal job. City council was blown away. Richard Snead actually gave them verbal kudos, asked them a question, and I've actually received a complimentary email from him on behalf of how well our, our students presented and the quality work that they did. So, my question to all of us is, are we smarter than a CCS sixth grader? And I think not. Because what, I don't know if you were able to see the media coverage, but one of the girls at the end said, and the super cool thing about it is, is adults have tried to solve this problem for twenty years and us kids did it. And so, it was, it was just a wonderful, wonderful, and we appreciate Ms. Odell's work and ORAU's support for, for helping make that happen. Then just a few dates, since this is, I guess, our last school board meeting for this current school year. As we just begin summer, principals will be back on contract on July fifteenth. And then teachers actually return this year on July twenty-ninth and our first student day will be on August the second. So, although it seems like summer has just begun, it will fly by fast and furious. And then over the summer, our TINREDDI data will start to trickle in. So, as that starts to trickle in, I will blow your phones up with texts and emails, hopefully sharing good news, hopefully. So, any questions for me?
All right.
That concludes my report.
All right. Does any other board member have anything they wish to add?
I'm awfully proud of all of you all. Thank you for everything.
Yes.
I think we could end with school board coming out and doing a big leg kick. What do you think, Jamie? Yeah, yeah?
Before we, before we, before we do that, let me call this meeting adjourned, Andy.
They force me to do it all the time at Central Office.
Joey will do a part where...